Moon County to do the HVAC work out of Public Works. Myself, Jeff Squares, Larry, Larry and Cliff. I think you and Eric helped go through that building, finding out what were hot spots, the cold spots, the IT room, make sure we checked everything. Most of that equipment is original to the building being built back in eighties, early eighties. Most of it is either barely running or is not running. My suggestion is we do the whole building for seventy-seven thousand, not to exceed. New heat pumps, high efficient gas furnaces for backup heat, just like we did EMS building on Bill's side. Payback should be pretty quick. I know, talking with Larry just a minute ago, the electricity bill out there is pretty high, so hopefully this will bring it down and bring it back in line. Questions?
So is there two different proposals here? Cause I'm not, I mean I'm seeing a not to exceed forty-three thousand, eighty.
You may have, yes, there was two proposals.
And then a thirty thousand too, or?
First proposal was doing part of the building.
Just part of the buildings. And then I went ahead and had Jeff send me what, if you could do the rest of the building for seventy-seven. To me, it just makes sense to pull that old equipment out and put all the new stuff in, especially getting rid of a lot of those blackboard baseboard you can't even get to anymore, cause they have desks tucked up against them and there's nowhere to put the desk. I apologize, I should have brought you this information a little sooner, but I just got one.
The one attached should be the one for prior building, the one that just handed you, Kristen's for the whole building. It's for seventy-seven, two hundred, two hundred dollars.
I don't know, Larry would like to add anything or odds, or?
The unit, the main unit for the main offices has been in there for, since the building was constructed. The engineering section, I know, has been in there over twenty-five years, so it's time, time to replace them, so.
And I don't see Brian in here, but he, I'm sure he can attest to at least getting a unit in the IT room to help eliminate a lot of the dirt and debris in his units would help him out there too.
What are we talking about?
Our AC out there. We're actually gonna try and separate our pile server room to where we can keep some of the dust and stuff out of there. With our business out there, you know, our building is always dusty, so it's just helpful. Hopefully helps the computer equipment last a little longer.
Oh yeah, if they've ever got water in there, I could plant corn.
I think it makes the most sense to just do it all at one time and we're done.
Second, capital improvements. So was that?
We had ninety in there for it.
Oh, okay. Well, that's even better. I was trying to remember what we had on there as far as budget and what we were right on the list of.
So when you say the whole building, are you talking about the garages too, or?
Not the garage, garage, no.
Just the meeting room.
Just, just the office?
Right.
Engineering office, the meeting room, where all the guys have their lunch and meetings, with that other office right there where?
The GIS or?
Yeah, I think so. And then all the front office.
So the meeting room, the lunchroom, but it doesn't include all the garage bays on both ends?
No, no.
They're non-heated. The only one that is heated is the mechanic's bay, the other end's not heated.
Oh yeah, it's been added on a bunch. You got duckworks, twelve by twelve feeding offices, it should be a twenty by twenty duckwork. It's just been patched to patch to patch.
You guys good?
Yeah.
So if you could approve the cooperative agreement and then the proposal from Air Systems?
Air Systems.
Oh, I'm sorry, Air Systems.
Okay. I move that we approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Moon County for HVAC services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I move we approve and sign the contract with Air Systems for the Cole County Public Works HVAC system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See what, I think I'm gonna jump around. Let's go ahead and do the MSP grant application letter and that way we can, we can get you out of here if that's okay.
David and Ryan are from the city are here to talk about a revised letter to the Economic
Development Association pertaining to the grant application that they submitted a month or two ago, give or take. The first letter with feedback from the EDA, they wanted something more firm in the commitment of funding towards the project. And so, David and Ryan, do you want to expand upon that?
Sure. So in working with the EDA and our liaison to the, to the EDA, they kind of go through the packet and make comments on what they would like to see strengthened and changed. And so one of the comments that we got was that they would like to see the funding mechanism a little, a little bit more strongly worded, because our, our matching funds for the grant are the capital improvement sales tax, the joint city county project. And so currently, we have one point six million dollars identified for MSP. Kind of informally, they would like to see, because Cole County is a separate political subdivision, they'd like to see a little bit more specific commitment to the, to the one million dollars of that joint city county that is controlled by Cole County, identified specifically for MSP. And so, this letter here is, is written as a statement of intent, basically saying, you know, we have a process where we enter into the cooperative agreements for these joint city county cap, sales tax projects. When it is time to execute the big cooperative agreement for that project, we intend to commit the one million dollars under the processes that we usually use. It is, and then says, here it specifies, it's in the intent of Cole County to formally commit these funds to the project through a cooperative agreement at that time. So this isn't binding, this is merely a, a statement of intent to EDA showing that Cole County is on board with the project and on board specifically with the funding that is being proposed in the grant matching, the matching funding that is specifically being proposed in the, in the grant application. They just want a little bit more information, always.
I'm good with it. I mean, we committed the money into sales tax and ran that to the MSP project, so.
Yep. Me too.
I don't have any questions as far as that goes, this is just saying, I sent another letter saying that that's the intention.
So will we be building the roads before the development happens or after the development happens and?
Well, in some ways, we have it set up in the grant application that we wouldn't necessarily have to be finished with the construction until June of 2024. So, you know, in that time, I'm assuming that the largest majority of the hotel conference center parking facilities stuff would all be finished or we would be building them, you know, somewhat simultaneously. But certainly, I think the road in front of the hotel, which would ultimately serve the hotel, would be something that would be built in the latter stages of the construction of that building, you know, some familiar, similarly to, you know, how you would, you know, kind of see a, just a building site plan constructed with the building coming first and then the, the site elements coming near the end. That's how I envision that happening. Probably some, some grading work to help access the construction site, so. Yeah, the final finishes would be done probably after the, the building is built, cause you don't wanna build the building and, or build the road and then tear up the road, you know, taking equipment over it, but, but yeah, I would say simultaneously with some, some staging going in there.
And then, just curious, obviously there was an article in the paper this morning about the TDD for the MSP site that was submitted to the Circuit Court. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So the TDD, the MSP Transportation Development District, there was a petition that was filed last week to create a TDD. So the TDD process is a little unique. You actually have to ask permission from the Circuit Court to form a TDD and you actually have to name the Missouri State Highways and Transportation Commission as a respondent on that petition. So that was filed last week. MHTC is still doing their review on that. There should be a hearing on that within the next month or so. And then, the, the intention is that the district would be formed and then a, a sales tax would be put in place in order to help fund the, some of the improvements, maybe the transportation related improvements over there. And so, if you recall back to the, to the overall master proposal that was submitted by Chesterfield and Arc Taurus, total public infrastructure, transportation related infrastructure is over ten million dollars. So between the, between the, this grant, the EDA grant and the TDD and things like TIFF and the CID, which was formed, previous, you know, kind of taking pots of money from a bunch of different places, put together to do all the public infrastructure. So the TDD is, you know, one portion of the transportation infrastructure and this grant is another funding mechanism for, for the same infrastructure, so.
So is that, is that TDD based on, I mean, a lot of the original proposal from Arc Taurus was some office building and some residential properties, townhomes and different things? And so how do those types of businesses, how do they generate that sales tax?
They don't. So, so TDD, using only a sales tax, only generates money through a sales tax. So if there are components in there that do not generate sales tax, then they, then they, you know, they just don't generate sales tax. And so that's part of the reason why we are kind of trying to draw in a few different funding sources, is really broaden that menu that we can then draw from. So that way we are not boxed in and say, okay, we have to do retail because we have to have this whole thing generating retail sales tax. We wanna be able to keep the ability to have mixed uses in there. And so that's the reason why we're kind of using a lot of different tools here so we can maintain that flexibility.
Thanks for the information. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with moving forward too, so. Anyway, do you need to vote on that, or?
Yes.
So what are we, what are we voting on?
Make a motion to sign the MSP grant application letter.
Okay. Do we have one of those?
Revised, maybe revised letter, cause they had done one.
Well, it's, it's a, it's an addition, it's a second letter, it's not a revision, it's just kind of more information.
We have one here.
I move that we sign the letter of intent for, with the City of Jefferson's application for EDA DR grant funding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Go back to.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Signing of twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one DSS SF Grant Award.
This is the grant that we sign every year, it's supplementation funds for the post-certified deputies. We put in for forty-five positions and we got approved for anybody under, that was making under forty-five thousand a year.
This is the grant award?
Yes.
I move that we sign the Deputy Sheriff Salary Supplementation Fund sub-award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The ESO re-signing a contract.
I move that we re-sign the ESO contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Boy, we're just moving right along here. Okay, the CAD integration contract.
So this is just integrating the CAD so that the image trend, or the ESO and the? Sorry about that. So that's that the BPCR and the CAD system communicates, so just an interface. We were able to get the pricing down about twenty-seven hundred dollars from their initial quote.
This is what Zerker?
That's correct, sir. Central Square, Zerker is now Central Square they repurchased.
I move that we sign the CAD integration contract with Central Square.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Lucas CPR Device Annual Maintenance Contract.
So this is the contract they're currently going out of contract for maintenance purposes. So this is a one-year contract. Our goal is next year is to try to get a two-year, but we only budgeted a one-year when we talked to Kristen, so we had to change it to a one-year and then next year we'll go further. Those are relatively expensive devices and if they have to be repaired, they can get pretty costly, so. And that's for the CPR machines.
I move that we sign the annual maintenance, maintenance contract for the Lucas CPR devices with Stryker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to vote on his purchase order too, or is that all, one of the same?
I'll have to there sign one.
You may need to sign that one instead of the one you just signed. Sorry.
No, not if I'm gonna get your job.
Okay.
Annual renewal for Adult Brain Injury Service Coordinator contract. You just keep signing, buddy.
This is our annual renewal with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the Adult Brain Injury Service Coordinator. So this contract pays for Shaolin to work out of our office, you know, that she does work in several counties, but this pays for all of her salary branch and travel.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the annual renewal for Adult Brain Injury Service Coordinator contract with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award of twenty twenty nineteen Telephone and Video Visitation Services, Cole County Jail.
So we went out to bid, you're not gonna hit the fancy tab because Jessica's on, is on vacation, but my staff went through the five applications, we're recommending Securus Technologies. We did it for a couple reasons, or for a few reasons. One is they live monitor all our video sessions, so they have people that are watching us and then they live monitor the phone calls. They're local. And then they also will allow us to use the guarded exchange, which if we have to use them to download phones, it's usually five hundred dollars a phone, they're throwing that in, since they own that company, they do that for free. System's capable of having video units conducting all of them simultaneously, so there's twenty-three units, so we could be doing twenty-three video visitations at a time versus what we have right now is three. This is not something that we pay for, they pay us.
Okay, so who are you recommending?
Securus Technologies.
And what was the amount, or?
Well, there's really, there's not an amount, because like I said, they pay us, there's a, there's a.
Oh, they pay us?
Yeah.
They charge the people.
Yeah, they charge whoever using the phone calls or the video visitation and we get part of that.
I see. Good?
Yeah.
I move that we award the bid to Securus, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Discussion of law enforcement growth.
Put that off to close session.
Okay, okay. New business?
I'm, I'm sorry, on the unfinished business, and I do some unfinished business, it was late yesterday before I, before I had finished with the vendors, so I'm not on the agenda, but I don't know, she's been on the agenda.
Right.
Several times before, so it's really old business that never got solved as far as the.
Security glass.
Yes.
Yeah.
So she would just like some answers on that, I know we've probably done every other office around here, and she has another proposal, or you talked?
Well, the whole road's led back to the same line, so, but I have copies if you wanna revisit what I initially.
Okay.
Why don't you guys went down and talked to them? Yeah, thank you. So I think initially when you came down and looked at moving the desks forward and everything, it is just too expensive and we did look at different aspects of doing that. Three more, you know, three more order and three more glass sizes. The electrical, for the electrical, they wanna put a hole in the middle of the floor along with the hallway being congested, I mean, it just didn't work for us. So I went back to the original quotes and what I would lean towards myself is the first one. It is very similar to what the assessor has in place right now and that would work for us too, and I think it is the least expensive of the quotes. And I just brought back up the three initial, you probably have four quotes from previous. But I think Rob would do a good job and I think his first quote is the one that would work best for our office.
So that's option two?
I put it first, it is option two on the quote, but I put it on top of your sheet there, so it'd be the first one you looked at. Yeah, initially we were looking at option one and the difference is it has the enclosure, vertical and horizontal, yeah, the top and the bottom, but option two would work, it's, it looks really nice.
I'm fine if that's what you wanna do, I mean, we looked at some different options and do some different things out there. The other ones would have been a lot more expensive.
Yep.
But if this will work for your office, that's what you wanna recommend and it costs less, so not opposed to the costing less idea.
Yep.
And as time goes on, we're finding sharing that hallway between the collector and the recorder is just really tough, there's enough room. I mean, Larry, is he here? He probably would agree to that. But if you, if we put a pole, I mean, ideally, when you looked at this, pulling the, the front desk forward, we had visited that for years and with the cost involved and then putting a pole in the middle, we just don't have the room. Well, somebody can do a pole dance, Joe.
Practicing in the garage? Broke in three of them already? Going a long way, Sam.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with option two.
Option two?
Yep, I'm good.
Yes.
Yes.
And we need to.
Thank you so much.
Vote on that.
Just wanna approve the proposal submitted by Brady's.
I move that we appro, approve the proposal from Brady's for option number two for the recorder's office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Judy, do you want these back?
Do we have any other unfinished business?
I don't need it, if you need a copy for something, remember.
Thanks, do you have yours, Sam?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, any other unfinished? Okay, new business accounts payable review.
There's one in voice, a couple we need to pay, so I asked for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Kristen says we have to do this first, signing of the management represent, representation letter for Williams Keepers. And just so you know, there are donuts, they're also courtesy of Williams Keepers. It's not a bribe or anything, but anybody that wants a donut.
It's weird, they're right by me.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
So at the beginning of the audit, every year we sign an engagement letter. At the end of the audit, we sign a management representation letter. It really just says that we fulfilled all of our responsibilities related to the audit and provided them with all the information that they needed. I just need that signed before they can submit you with the file.
I move that we sign the management letter for, from Williams Keepers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Williams Keepers, two percent, twenty nineteen audit.
And this is Ashley Rowling from Williams Keeper, she's gonna visit the audit.
Morning.
Morning.
As Krista mentioned, I'm Ashley Rowling, I'm an audit senior with Williams Keepers and I worked as the in-charge on the audit this year with Amanda Schultz, who's the partner. She had another board meeting at the same time this morning. So we're just gonna go over this year's CAFR, which is not this whole thing, and the first couple pages of the reports you have, there's a summary report. So the summary report just is a very high level of this year's CAFR, which is the comprehensive annual financial report for the county, which is as of December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So the CAFR contains multiple different sections. There's an introductory section, the financial section, which we'll cover shortly, and a statistical section, which starts on page eighty, which contains a lot of good information about trends in the county, you wanna take a look at that. So we're just gonna go very high level of the financial statements. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the best audit opinion you can get on financial statements. As Kristen mentioned, with management rep letter, management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements, and that also includes the design and implementation of internal control. Kristen prepared the basic financial statements and schedules and reviewed and approved the footnotes that we prepared. We do use our judgment in determining how to audit the county. That judgment is based, based on a risk-based approach, so we don't audit every single transaction of the county. And we do focus on areas that could potentially be misstated. We did evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies and the reasonableness of significant estimates and the overall financial statement presentation. With governmental accounting, there are two sets of financial statements. The first is the governmental accounting, government-wide financial statements, which are full accrual and include all of the funds of the county, as well as all capital assets, long-term debt and other liabilities. And then we have the fund financial statements, which are separated into governmental funds, which is the revenue from taxes and other sources, and that uses the modified accrual basis of accounting. And we have the proprietary funds, which are revenues from user charges that uses full accrual accounting. We included a very high-level chart of the government-wide financial statements from the past few years. The management's discussion and analysis on pages four through twenty-four goes through a detailed review of any of those fluctuations. We also performed a single audit this year as the county expended over seven hundred fifty thousand in federal funds. A single audit basically just increases the work on our end and also requires us to issue a few additional reports. The county expended about one point two million in federal funds and all of those programs are listed on the schedule of expenditures, the federal awards or the CIFA, which is on pages one hundred five and one hundred six. The two reports we issue along with the single audit are internal control and compliance related to financial reporting and internal control and compliance related to major federal programs, and we had no findings on either of those reports. I know that was very high level, but any questions on the financial statement portion?
Nope.
We also have the auditors communicating. We also have the auditor's communication letter, which you'll find in the back of this bound copy. This letter contains different comments about our audit process that were required to communicate under professional standards to an entity's governing board, which in this case is the commissioners. So a few highlights from this letter. We didn't have any transactions that we considered unusual or significant. And there was no changes in accounting policies during the year except for Gatsby Statement 84 on fiduciary activities, which basically just added a statement, which I believe is on page 34 this year. There are a few, or two new standards that will be coming in future years. One is Gatsby 87 on leases, which will put leases on the balance sheet. And then there's Gatsby 89, accounting for interest costs incurred before the end of the construction period. So we'll definitely work with Kristen on those in the coming years. We still have some time on both of those. We did look at the county's estimates on the financial statements and found them reasonable. There's a listing of the most significant estimates that are included in the financial statements here. We found the accounting records to be in good order and did not propose any significant audit entries. And we had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues and no difficulties in performing the audit, which we did perform it all remotely this year. But we appreciate Kristen and Jen and Debbie's help in getting it completed timely as usual. The other letter that is in the back of this bound copy is the management letter. The scope of our engagement does not include an opinion on the adequacy of internal controls, but we still do evaluate internal controls to develop our audit procedures. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. We do have a couple best practice recommendations included in that letter, though. So that is all I have to cover. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys again this year. Is there any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you all.
Thanks for the donuts.
Hey, no problem. I'll tell Lyle.
And conjunction with the audit by state statutes, we have to put the financial statement in the paper. So this is a copy that I do the sign that will appear in the paper. The overall financial statement.
You just got to sign it?
Yeah. I guess you can approve to accept the audit and then sign that in the paper. Accept the audit.
I just really haven't had a lot of time to go through this, so we just got this on Friday.
There weren't any changes of the drafts that were presented last week?
This wasn't the same thing that was presented last week?
Um, that's just a copy of the statements that are in here, just in a format that can be put in the paper.
Right.
And if you want, you can wait on that. That's, that's not a big deal. I can put that back on the agenda. I'm just trying to do it at the same time, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to look at the totals and it just, they just don't seem to add up. But maybe I'm not adding them right. So that fund balance end of year is 12, 12 million?
So in that summary report she just presented? Here. I'm restricted in that position. To the summary report. But that's each individual fund there.
Yeah, like I said, I if you guys want to approve it, that's fine. I just haven't had time to look at it.
Well, we can just take
It's hard to
We can just do it.
It's hard to just look at a financial statement and say, you know.
Okay, we'll just, we'll, we'll hold it till next week. Okay. Uh, let's go ahead. We'll do the first reading of budget adjustment number 12, because I know the care act, it's going to take a while.
This is 58,000, $8, no action today. This is CDSF grant and emergency response. No action today, is it DOJ?
It's just a grant that y'all approved last week.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to discussion of CARES Act consultant RFQ.
So you know Jessica sent you those applications that you did receive from the different
They studied this Sunday.
So we just want a little guidance, what you want to do. You want to, are you ready to pick one of them or interview two or three of them? How, how do you want to approach this? RFQ is a little different than the regular RFPs, so.
Yeah, I think we ought to narrow it down at least because evidently, Monata County, Cooper County, Boone County, they, they are accepting applications.
And we have had several calls.
Yeah, I, I had a talk with Jamestown School Superintendent yesterday. And he said, well, I thought Jamestown was in Monata. He said, well, 30% of our, 30% of our student population is in coal. So, but yeah, this was
Do we have six or seven?
There's six. So we received six proposals. I think there's probably three that stand out, possibly four. It's just you guys deciding, do you want to interview? And how many do you want to interview at this point?
I think the Civic Solutions group, which is out of New Jersey, that's the only thing I they're, they're a long distance away. BKD out of Springfield, Missouri would be
Those two and Brown Smith Wallace was the other one that were standing out, I think, of the six.
Yeah, I got.
I mean, are any of them going to be coming onsite? I mean, or it's all probably going to be done over the phone, isn't it?
Um, I did have multiple questions during the process that Jessica sent. All asking, could they do remotely? Our answer was, yes, there are some things you can do remotely, but there are requirements for you to be here in person for certain meetings and things like that, so. We may need to decide how much in person you want them to be here.
If that's the case, the Brown Smith Wallace is out of St. Louis. BKD is out of Springfield.
Civic Solutions.
Civic Solutions is
New Jersey.
Parsip- Sipony, New Jersey, but Christie, had you said you had done some things with BKD or?
They're the firm that does all the audits for the community health centers in Missouri. So that's how I recognize them, because I'm on the board of the health center.
I definitely think we need to narrow it down and then possibly is that an in-person interview? Is it a phone interview? Is it?
You could probably get BKD and the one from St. Louis, Brown Smith Wallace, to come. Parsipony, New Jersey, I would think, and
We can Skype or just
Yeah, yeah.
For an interview? So would you like to start with those three? And then doesn't mean that you couldn't go further down if you wanted to, but if you want to start with those three. And if you give me a date, then we'll try to get it all arranged with them. In person would be great. If not, Skype at this point. So we can look at next Tuesday, giving them some notice. Since it's already on your calendar for Tuesday, we'll do it in the afternoon. Or however you want to do this. And maybe from then till now, we can coordinate some questions or something that you want to
Yeah, and I'll go over this was a lot of reading. Well, scheduled for Tuesday afternoon.
So we're going to start with BKD, Brown Smith Wallace, and who else?
Civic Solutions.
Some of them that I've purviewed over. I mean, did any of them stand out as having any kind of expertise in in COVID-related stuff? Or was it all just kind of accountants?
I know there was more than one that referenced their other work that they have done on federal money. We can't reference it at the moment because they're all kind of going together in my brain, but yeah, I do think there was at least one or two that referenced their prior work with federal funding.
And I'd say a lot of people have probably dealt with federal funding, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're in the know on all this COVID stuff, which is very unclear as to how or what it can be spent on, so. I'm good with scheduling those three if they can and trying to develop some questions to see what their contacts or their acquaintances know of, of how and what that can be spent on, because a lot of questions.
Yeah, and I sent you a copy of that Friday treasures. So I, I've tried to listen to that a couple times today and didn't get I'm hoping that's going to maybe answer some questions too, but I don't know.
If I could go ahead and start at one and then I'll leave 40 minutes in between each one or and then for you guys to maybe discuss. And I do think this would have to be enclosed because maybe the consultant fee would come up. I don't know. Could it be under closed?
No.
That would have to be open. Okay.
Yeah, so we don't, I mean, they didn't submit any kind of pricing at all?
No.
For RFQs, you don't.
Yeah.
Because what you're doing is hiring on qualifications. Then after you, you make a choice, then you start negotiating
Price.
Costs. It's like they do with engineering firms and architects.
Yeah, but usually, cost comes into play too, so. You might have great qualifications, but if you're charging a thousand dollars an hour, it's not reasonable.
Well, at that point, you go to the next trust.
Yeah.
You just see, that's what we do with engineering firms. We feel the price is what you buy and there's standards out there, price range for aid firms. They come in at high, we just go to the next firm and tell them thank you and move on.
So I guess so I'm just trying to understand this. So, I mean, obviously, we got three out-of-town firms, and so we're going to interview them on qualifications. And then we pick one and then we ask price. And then if we say no, then we go to the next one and ask price and then, I mean, so
I think part of the interview process could include pricing. Like, yeah, I mean, give us an estimated price and things like that.
I would think we'd be able to in close session because that's going to come up. I think it would be contract negotiation potentially.
That's a, then becomes an unfair advantage for one to another, especially if it's open. And you start talking about that. The last person knows what the first two have already recorded. So maybe it's just qualifications first and then ask the price.
That's typically how engineers, they have a breakout of hourly rates based on different people within their scope. Professional engineers is so much, usually an hour and, and surveyors and everything else. I mean, I would assume that this would be something similar.
Typically, they wouldn't submit that with their
Right.
Proposal.
But that would be something that we could ask for. I mean, we know how much typically we're going to spend, you know? I mean, they're traveling from somewhere to here. I mean, they got travel fees, they got all these other fees, they got, they got their time and what's
And I think that's going to have to be a question as well. I mean, especially if you're talking to someone out of state.
Right.
You're going to have to figure in those travel fees.
Right.
Take that into consideration.
I, George Sansucci.
Yeah.
If you're interviewing three different firms, each might have a different approach to doing the project. I don't know if, you know, the first person that they can watch, you know, it's almost like that ought to be some confidential information, but I don't know what the we, we would normally just interview and then select the best one. And like Larry said, go back and negotiate a contract. And if we can't come to terms on that, then we just go typically don't talk price or anything like that in interviews.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're doing it open. If we, the last one is going to have the best advantage because they could just, you know, lowball it, but then hit us with fees or, I don't know. They have references too. I asked Christie, because two of them had listed Sedgwick County, Kansas, which I think is Wichita you said, so.
Sedgwick County is Wichita.
Yeah, I, which I didn't know. I just wanted to make sure because there, there are some references too that, that they've given, but
So we do, do we need to not do it in a commission meeting and have others present? Just do it outside of a commission meeting and similar to the public works doing it with an engineer?
If only one of you want to have the direction, but the other two would then need to vote on it, so.
Well, if we're going to do it in an open session and you're going to, I mean, so you start eliminating people and they're going to be watching.
Yeah, well, I think we need to
That, that becomes an unfair advantage. And so the others may say, well, you know, you guys threw all these other people out. Why am I going to waste my time? So. I mean, because you're, at some point, you're going to negotiate a contract.
At that point, you could put it under bids and contracts. Close.
Okay, so it's just going to be an interview and we aren't going to talk price then?
Okay. And we might invite BKD and Brown Smith and Wallace to come if they want to come next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be everyone has you have the ability to be here more for the hearing person. If you can't, then we will make other arrangements.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start next Tuesday at one and then we'll just keep it to just their qualifications. And then hopefully Jessica and Kristen can work together on some questions and what we want to make sure we accomplish.
Are you going to schedule appointments?
Yes.
Where you get some type of shared sheet or something that that would have the questions on there, and then maybe we'll have some other questions as well, so.
So we'll try to get that out before that meeting. So then maybe if you have other things, we want to be consistent on what we ask all three of them, so.
Okay. I think we covered everything. Anything else? Mr. Jeff?
We're in foreclose session.
Uh-huh.
I will say that, you know, we did have the Subrogency Plan Guide that the courthouse did. I did receive yesterday the one for the annex building and Carnegie Building for us to review, a draft copy. So I am gonna send that out to Sarah and maybe some of the key people in this building to make sure we got everything covered that we want to. I'll come back and ask you if we could make these fancy little flip chart things. Again, it's just the Carnegie Building and the annex.
Yeah, because we probably need to remember to let Chris in his office, oh, to get the hell out of there.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to work on that, too, on the procedures of how, who's to do what.
Yeah.
Are you gonna send that to us?
I can.
Yeah, if you would, please. Can we include Brian on that or something? I mean, I don't know if there's a way to, obviously, we got that new phone system going in. I don't know if there's a way that we can ring something through that phone system that would alert everyone.
And I think that's kind of separate from this. This is just telling employees what to do, where to go.
Right.
When something happens. But for us, it's management to make sure we get everybody out of the building and that. Yes, I did talk to Brian about that, and he said that his phone system would do that. And as long as we set up people in sections of who we want to, you know, so. But then directing who to speak over that speaker, you know, to tell people. This is just a guide for the employees, but definitely include the assessors office in on what we have so far.
I would think you'd include all the department directors, all the elected officials.
Safety committee.
Yeah, and the safety committee hasn't been active for quite some time, but we could start with the safety committee. I mean, start there. But again, it's just people in the annex building and the Carnegie Building, so.
Yeah, there's other buildings on.
I'll do my best to get it out to everybody that would have a say in what we do. But I'll bring it back to you.
Send it to everybody.
Okay.
I'm just saying, everybody might have an idea.
Yeah.
And then I'll bring it back to you guys for the final.
I don't know if you want that much to put on it, but.
Fine, yeah, I'm coordinating, though.
Well, we all go over to the sheriff's department. He has refreshments and snacks.
But you have people in different parts of the building that may have different ideas and have seen things differently, so I don't think it hurts to ask. And we can leave that up to each elected official to present it to their team and the departments to their people. And then that way, you just have the input coming from one person instead of 300.
I think we've had one department, too, or one elected official, where they, some of their people chose not to leave the building anyways. You know, you can encourage them to.
Okay, we'll work on that, then.
Sam, can I mention something? So we're working on a few new things for our website. We're trying to, from the data that we get from Department of Health and Senior Services about COVID, we're trying to tease out how many Cole County residents are being tested for COVID-19 every, and be able to report back those negative tests, too, because you, when you look at the state website, they have a quota, I think it's either 7,500 or 10,000 tests a day. So more and more people are being, you know, they're pushing out more and more tests. And I think that if we could show the number of negative tests that are being done in the county or Ford County residents, I think that is really important for people to see. So from the data we get from DHSS, we're trying to tease that information out so we can add it to the website. And we're also looking at adding some information to our front page that maybe gives the citizens an idea of the other comical diseases that are happening in the county and the investigations that we're doing because COVID-19 has got so much attention. I think a lot of people didn't realize that there's over 100 comical diseases that are mandated to be reported to DHSS by doctors, and we investigate most of those because of the nature of them, whether it's adenobites or pertussis or salmonella or whatever. So we're looking at maybe doing a snapshot of those on our website so people can see that, you know, in addition to 61 cases of COVID, we've also had, you know, this many cases of salmonella, you know, this many cases of chlamydia and gonorrhea and syphilis and E. coli or whatever else we've had going on in the county this year. So we're looking to do some things like that on our website. And then I also wanted to mention that the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and the Missouri National Guard will be putting on one of the community COVID testing events here in Cole County, July 7th, 8th, and 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So anyone who wants to have the COVID PCR test, the one where they stick the swab up your nose that tells you whether or not the virus is present in, you know, it's just a, it's there or it's not. It could be dead, and you could still be shedding the virus. This test just says whether it's there or not. Anyone can go for free those days. And it's gonna be at our former building. And the link to sign up for that, you have to sign up and make an appointment is on our website and also on DHSS's website. They did Montauk and Osage last week, and they've done several other communities, so it's kind of our turn.
That's in your press release that you put out, correct?
Um, we did not put a press, the.
Are you sending, you sending out?
I, we did send out a flyer, yes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna send that out to the wall.
People need to real, they need to realize they need to schedule an appointment, not just to show up.
If they show up, they'll direct them to go over probably to the old parking lot and fill it out online and then get back in line. But it is better if they, if they register.
To schedule.
No, the press release I sent out yesterday was unfortunately about our second death.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Anything else? I don't know. We'll make a motion. We go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021 of the Right Statutes of Missouri for Legal Actions, Section 610-0211 and Security Systems, Section 610-02119.
So are you making a motion?
I made a motion.
Or are you saying you're entertaining?
I made a motion.
Don't yell at me. I was asking.
Yes.
I wasn't clear. I'll second your motion.
Okay, roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
So testy today.
You have two legals and one security.
Yeah.
Tell me which one you want.
All right, we got, we got.